Okay, it's 6:49. I'll call to order this board's selectance meeting for December 6th, 2012. First order of business is approval of the minutes of meeting for November 29th, 2012.
Move approval, second.
Okay, motion been made in second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, on one item, we've included it twice, and it needs to be, one of the, needs to be deleted, the consolidated facilities budget in the amount of $612,000 under item 10.
Item 10.
Item 10, it's bottom of the page, third one up, it indicates that the budget amount of $612,000, and then the last item on item 10 also is a repeat of that. So I'm moving the, just, we delete the last part of the budget because it's already in there.
So where are we? Uh, $612, that's on.
Yeah, it's just repeated twice.
Also, oh yeah, I see it, okay. Yep, okay.
That's.
So, motion been made in second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Has amended. Confirmation of future meeting dates, at this point we have December 20th, 2012. Do you want to look at future dates? Yeah, do we want, um, so when do we normally do, the first and?
First and third, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
So it'll be the third?
It'll be the third and the 17th. Do we want to do it that close to, uh?
17th.
Yeah.
17th?
Yeah. Okay. I'm not flying out till, when am I flying out? So I'm going to Virginia that week, late in that week. I'm not sure if I'm going on that Thursday, though.
Do you want to deal with this, then, on the 20th? Would you know then?
I'll, yeah, I'll definitely know then.
Yeah, do you want to just hold it off?
Yeah, why don't we do that? Yeah, because if, if I don't leave till Friday, then we can do Thursday. That's fine. Okay. That's fine. Okay, item number four, citizens speak. Is there any citizens who would like to address the board? Guess not. Everybody's out doing Christmas shopping. Okay, item five on the agenda is the approval of the wiring inspector appointment, Justice Prandak.
Hi, Joe.
Two items in your, for you on the agenda, correct?
Mm-hmm, yep.
Okay.
The first is approval of a new wiring inspector.
This is to replace a?
Yep, in, in October, Richard Sasse, our most recent wiring inspector, he resigned. So we conducted, we advertised first in-house, and then we didn't get any response, so we advertised in the paper. We had seven applicants, and we interviewed, we narrowed those, out of the applications, we narrowed that down to three who we interviewed. All three were from Milton, and my final choice was a gentleman named Dominic Franchielli. He is a, uh, he lives on Craig Hill Road, and he, he runs, he has a business called Dom's Electric Service, which he's run since 1984. I feel he's extremely qualified for the position, and the best choice of all the candidates.
Okay. This is a full-time position?
No, this is part-time.
Part-time position, okay.
It is part-time position, yes.
Okay.
Twenty hours a week, is it?
Uh, 25, I believe.
Did, did Mr. Sasse, who resigned, was he the one that worked for Milton and Randolph?
Ian Randolph, yes. Yes.
I'm not sure who you interviewed, Joe, but I do know Dom Franchielli, he actually did a couple of jobs for me, and I think he made a good choice.
Good.
He's a very good electrician.
Yep.
May we do a motion in front of us?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chair, to approve the appointment of Dominic Franchelli of 28, uh, 29 Craig Street, to the position of wiring inspector, contingent upon approval by the Personnel Board in pre-employment physical.
Second to motion.
Motion been made in second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay, item six, approval of part-time inspector position.
Okay, so my second item is, is I'd like to ask, respectfully ask the board for approval of a part-time local inspector, more generically known as an assistant inspector. Currently, it's myself and, and Mr. Bowley are full-time inspectors. I have, if I could pass out a little survey of the past 10 years of activity with the Building Department, the most significant page being the first one, which indicates the number of permits issued.
Permits.
Can I have one back, Paula? And if you look at, at the simple graph, it shows that permits have increased since 2001. We were at a number of 631. Last year, the last full year, fiscal year 2012, we were up to 1,085. And then this year, fiscal year 13, we're only five months into the year, and we're at half of what we did in 2012.
They used to do at least 11, 12 hundred.
Is this all permits, Joe, or?
No, these are, these are just building permits.
Just building permits.
Yeah, these are not plumbing and wiring permits.
That's good.
Simply because I'm looking.
Perhaps as you've been busy.
Uh, yeah, so.
But the, the value of the permits are down, the construction value is down?
The construction value is down, but if, if you go back and look at all these other years, they all have spikes. In other words, there were, there were, just to name a few projects, Milton Hospital, the big addition they did there, Milton Academy, the Science Center.
Yeah, Curry Building.
Curry College, the Student Center, just a number of, and, and so all of those years, from 2001 to 2009, all saw significant projects.
So would the hospital have been like 2003 or 2005?
The hospital was, was, I believe, 2005, because that was, that was under, well, no, that might have been fiscal year 2006. That was underway when I got here in 2006. So it probably was issued in fiscal year 2006.
Now, in terms of, I, I know the, the construction permits are based upon the, the value of the, or the estimated value of the construction, correct? But in terms of the rate, how comparable is that with other cities and towns? Do we know?
I think we're about even with other towns.
We are, okay.
We raised, we, we looked at the fees in 2009, and the, the decision by the board at the time was to keep the residential rate the same at $12 per thousand, based on the value of the work. But we increased the commercial rate at that time, for anything other than a one and two-family home, from $12 to $15 per thousand.
Okay.
We also increased the rate on the plumbing permits, which were notoriously low, probably one of the lowest in the state. We made them, we put them on power with our wiring permits. So plumbing permits are $35 per thousand on the value of the work, up to $10,000. And then, once you hit $10,000 in value, it drops to $10 per thousand.
Okay.
So wiring permits and plumbing permits are both the same.
Okay.
Fee schedule.
So, so we basically, in 2009, we looked at all permits?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
Raised fees on some of the miscellaneous things we do, like annual inspections, safety inspections, and like that.
Do we have a regular plan to do, a plan to do that on a, I know you, we wouldn't want to do it every year, but every four or five years to kind of?
Uh, we don't have a solid plan in place, but, but, you know, I'm constantly in contact with our counterparts in other cities and towns, and, and if there were significant reason to, to adjust the rates, we would certainly.
Okay.
Look at that again.
Okay.
Joe, is the reason for you requesting, making this request, is it, is your office behind, or?
Oh, yes.
Issuing permits?
Uh, we're behind on issuing, we're behind on everything we do. And it'll probably always be that way, and that's not a complaint, it's just, it's just the, the way it is. But we are right up against, there's a 30-day window to review building permit applications when they come in, when a person applies, and the time they, they get an answer from us, either, you know, here's your permit, or here's what we need to get you a permit. And we're right up against that. We're, we're running 26, 27, 28 days. And everything we do, we do in, in, everything that has to be reviewed.
It's all done online, I mean.
It's all done in order of which it was received. It's the fairest way to do it.
But you're, you're doing everything online, too, right?
Uh, the, the permit applications online really hasn't worked out yet. There was a lot of, there was a lot of security problems and server problems. We, we're going to try again on the 24th of December, when our hosting company goes to a new server, which will, and they've put in place some security measures that involve the owner's email, so that, I guess the best way to explain it, when, when a contractor applies for a permit, an email will go to the owner of the property.
Yes.
That was one of the, one of the things that wasn't in place when we first got the system. There's still a lot of other things that the system does that we use. Significant improvement in our workload and our workflow.
Okay, I mean, in terms of the inspection side of it?
The inspection side of it, and the reporting side of it, and, and the ease, just the ease of issuing permits.
Okay, but the permit itself is not?
Actually, actually putting it online has been difficult.
Okay.
And we're still working on that.
Okay.
Have you, have you looked into how Boston does it? Because you can get your permits online in Boston now?
Uh, I.
Short form permits.
I have, I have looked at that. I've actually gone into 1010 myself and done some online. What we're trying, I, I think, with Boston, I think you end up still printing out five pages of application and manually signing them, unless there's been a recent change. I know they've been changed, they've been developing this over the past several years. I haven't looked at it lately. But it seemed to me that, when I last used it, it was a little bit cumbersome. And you really needed, when you went into the Boston Inspection Services Office, you needed to get a staff member over to you. I know they have three or four terminals set up in the office for people to come and use. That was another issue we had before we could, we need to put a, a computer at our counter, and we had to, we had to rearrange our counter space. One, to make the area where the computer's going to go handicap accessible, so it's down at the right height.
Yep.
And also to make enough space within the, within the waiting area, so to speak.
Right.
We were a little bit crammed, and so, so we've had that alteration done. So we're, we're moving forward. I will certainly, I will certainly continue to look at Boston. And then, I, I think the, the town I'm going to look at more closely, though, is Marshfield, because they have, although they have an updated version, they have the same computer company that we have, providing our.
And basically, we're using a cloud system, so.
Right.
It is a cloud system, basically. It's, it's out on the internet. So we theoretically, although I don't think you're doing it yet, but theoretically, if we had tablet computers, an inspector would be able to go out in the field, as long as they had an internet connection, and do the inspection in real time.
Yes.
Yep. Well, I think, as I said to Joe, a few weeks, maybe a couple of months ago, that this is one of the, the few revenue-generating departments in the town. And I think it's.
Yeah, look at the other one over there. Oh, I regenerate a lot of revenue, too.
How much?
I'm sorry.
Yes. And I believe you are under pressure in there. You know, I think you'd be better served if, if you were in the office all the time, just approving permits or requesting more information, or getting people to work faster, you know?
Yeah, yes, definitely.
And, and bringing your inspector in for 20 hours a week, or, you know, to help Jay with the inspections, and just keep the ball rolling, because this is, this is where we can make money.
And, and we also, you know, we, we want to, there are other things that we need to look at, as far as bringing the, bringing the department into the 21st century, so to speak. Like, even the Facebook link that we talked about in a meeting the other day, that we just, you know, I, I'm not familiar, I don't use Facebook myself, so I'm not familiar with it yet, but I intend to get familiar with it, and, um, that will improve the feedback that we get from, from people, and, and I just think it'll speed up and make the department more efficient. But things like that, we're just, we're out flat, we don't, we don't, we can't get to them. And, and hopefully, we'll free up some time, so that we can not just run the department as we're running it, but look to the future and how we're going to improve it.
So you're saying the building inspector's department itself is, is going to get a Facebook?
Well, the town has.
Or just use the towns?
The town has Facebook.
Just using the towns, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I was going to say, because we've got three of them now, we've got the DPW, we've won, the police have won, another town, we've won.
Yep.
Yeah, okay. No, I think that's a great idea.
I do, too. I mean, it's, like I said, it's, it's, it can be a huge revenue generator. You know, you can become more of the, the PR guy in there.
Mm-hmm.
And, and possibly more people will pull permits, you know?
Yep. That, that will, that will always be a struggle. There's always a, a certain amount of people that are averse to that, but.
But if, if you made it as.
But if we can make it more user-friendly.
Exactly.
Then we can make some improvements in that, in that area, in that direction.
And you, you get a, an elderly person coming in, wanting to building a deck on the back of their house, you can give them more time.
Yep.
Personal time. You know, you're not, I'm not saying you're doing this, but, you know, if you've got 10 inspections in a day, you can only give a couple of minutes to each customer.
Right. Right now, our, our office hours, for example, are limited. The walk-in hours, walk-in service for people who, who, you know, permit applications need to be reviewed.
Right.
Walk-in hours are 8:30 to 10:00 each morning, that's an hour and a half each day. Because, or they can do other times by appointment. It would be nice to expand those hours, you know, either, either by just expanding that timeframe, or a couple hours at the beginning of the day, a couple hours at the end of the day.
Right.
Yes, there's a, there's lots of improvements we can make, and, and I'm looking forward to do that, but I do need the staff in order to pull that off.
Can I ask, what would this cost for an inspector?
Uh, it, it would be an entry level, step one.
For level seven, step one, it's approximately $27,500. We will be bringing this forward next week, Joe and I, to the Personnel Board, December 11th, and then if they approve this, Joe will have to give you a revised Inspeccional Services budget for 14, with this new position.
Right.
Well, I think this guy will pay for its, this guy, our gal.
That's right.
Will pay for themselves, you know, in a couple of months.
And, yeah, and then some. And then, of course, in addition to meeting the demand in the office, and avoiding complaints of backups and so on, another issue that I think can be addressed is the zoning violations.
Yes.
Which, you know, they're out there, there's, there's a few that, you know, I, I haven't lost notice of, where you've got people that are committing zoning violations, that have been told about it, and they're not cooperating. And it frustrates nearby neighbors who feel that it's, that the violations are detrimental to, to their property, and the hiring of an additional inspector can, I, I believe, can help deal with those kinds of zoning violations.
Yeah, actually, Bob, you, you raise a good point, and, and that's probably one that, that we should address a little bit further, because, as Joe's explained to me several times, you know, we do, when we hear about violations, we do respond to them, and we do, when necessary, fine people. The problem we really have is the fines are not very enforceable, and that's a, just a fact of the way the law is right now.
Well, that, that's if we, there are two ways we can enforce the zoning, ultimately, for people who, who refuse to comply. One is the 21D or the ticketing system. We can write you a ticket if you have a commercial vehicle on your property, or if you keep junk on your property for more than two weeks.
Or you take it to court.
Under the 21D, you write a ticket, and if it's a $50 fine or a $300 fine, whichever is prescribed, that's fine. But if the person refuses to pay, we have no, we can't attach the tax bill, we can't, we have no, no, we can't.
Send it to the collection, that's about it, yeah.
We can't revoke the registration, like, like you can with a parking ticket. However, I have heard from other inspectors that the law has changed, and we now can, in, in certain instances, attach the tax bills.
You can.
The other, the other method we can go is through the criminal court. The criminal court process is, is, used to be, well, still is a four- or five-step process, where you file a complaint, you have a hearing with a clerk. If the clerk finds enough evidence to issue the complaint, it then goes to arraignment, then pre-trial conference. And, and a lot of times, it gets resolved within that, within that part of the process. All of that used to take two to three, sometimes four months. Due to the.
Backlogs.
Shortfalls and the backlogs in the courts, that process has gone to a year and a half to two years. So it's become extremely cumbersome and not practical for us to try and use that system. We've got to look for another way, we've got to look for other avenues to, to ultimately get that enforcement in the end, because it is about protection of property values, the zoning. That's, that's the bottom line.
Yeah, and what typically happens, even if you, even if you do, like, we've had that happen, that, that you do get a judgment against the person, they, they stop doing it, and, and then a month later, they start doing it again, you've got to bring them back to court, and now you've got another year and a half, two years.
And oftentimes, the fine, if the court fines them, the court gets the fine. They don't give it to the town. Sometimes they do, but most often, it just goes to, back into the court system. So, so we, we, we do have a, a lot of goals, and, and all seeking to improve ser, level of service.
We do have a motion in front of us?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the creation of a second local building inspector position, 20 hours per week, in the Inspeccional Services Department, contingent upon approval by the Personnel Board.
Second to motion.
Motion been made in second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you, Trump.
Thanks very much.
Okay, item seven on the agenda is appointment of Mary A. Cunningham trustee. And.
Make a motion?
Sure.
I'll make a motion to approve the assent to amendment for successor trustee for the Mary A. Cunningham Trust, and authorize the chair to sign on behalf of the board.
Second to motion.
Okay, motion been made in second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. And now we have a fun one, item eight on the agenda. Why don't you come up to the, the microphone, Bob?
Yes, motion.
Okay, so we, we do have a, the Copeland Foundation has been very generous to the town again, and has given us a grant of $175,000 to acquire a piece of property, and what street is the?
Deer Run.
Deer Run Lane, which is contingent to the cemetery property, and will be used for future grave sites. And will add how many years to the?
It'll add, you know, a guest of it, between seven and 12 years.
Yeah, yeah. And, and the cemetery is getting pretty full at this point, so, so Copeland Foundation did give 175,000, and I do have a motion in front of us to accept a grant from the Copeland Foundation, the amount of 175,000, to be used specifically for the purchase of land of Bunny Milton Cemetery, which will provide approximately 1,300 additional grave sites.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Motion been made in second, and I might add that it was through the efforts of Dennis Cohen that, that grant was acquired, because he did go to the Copeland Foundation and, and kind of helped broker the deal, so we're also appreciative of that.
I'll second that, Mr. Chair. Feathering your cap, Mr. Cohen.
Okay, motion been made in second. Any further discussion?
Well, you know, I have one thing to say, or two things, actually, for, we're purchasing a, a piece of land for 175,000, and the end result, when we sell all the graves, could be three to four million, Bob, is that correct?
Yeah, correct.
A revenue.
So I think that's a good return on investment, Mr. Accountant.
Yes, it's not a bad return.
And also, it comes at a time when the cemetery is now over 300 years of age, and that's probably why there's becoming a space issue, and this will certainly help deal with, alleviate that a bit.
Correct. We've, you know, we've, we're, we're running it, we had projected of, of seven to 10 years of projected sales without this property. So, so this will give us, you know, upwards of another 12 years beyond that. And then, who knows what, I mean.
But at least it'll give us some breathing room, a little bit.
It'll, it'll give us some breathing room and some long-range planning to, to see. I mean, you know, there is not much land abutting the cemetery, which is available for us to develop.
Right, right.
If I could mention about the land swap.
Sure.
Because I think it's important for the public to know how this came about. A piece of land on Gordon Road, that the cemetery owns, was going to be, was, it was a, a proposal by Paul Sullivan, who owns this piece of land on Deer Run, to swap his piece of land on Deer Run for the Gordon Road parcel, which is buildable, I guess. And a lot of the neighbors, you know, they, they felt their backs were to the wall, and they objected. And that's when we brokered a deal with the Copeland Foundation. We said, rather than going to town meeting and trying to get town meeting to approve this land swap, it would make great sense if the Copeland Foundation actually put up the money to purchase Deer Run Lane, and also keep Gordon Road. And that's one of the provisos that they have here, is that, you know, Gordon Road remains a cemetery, cemetery land, and not to be sold off in the future, if, if we can do that. So in essence, we, we end up getting 600, approximately 600 graves in Gordon Road, plus an additional 400, 500 on Gordon Road, I'm told.
Right.
Jeez, we're going down. Okay?
It's a lot of ledge.
And 1,300 on Deer Run.
Right.
And there's no land swap, there's no major neighborhood brawl about this land swap, and everybody is happy.
Well, we're ecstatic. The, you know, the Board of Cemetery Trustees, you know, Paul Dolan, Joe Ridd, and Barbara Martins, and Ian Walsh, and myself are ecstatic about this. I mean, this, you know, is, again, the Copeland Foundation steps up to the plate all the time.
They certainly do.
And that, you know, this, this is, you know, something, most people don't think much of the, of a cemetery until you need it, you know? Fortunately, we're thinking of it all the time. And, and we're thinking of, we're running out of room, what are we going to do? And, you know, for, for a foundation like them to, to step up and, and help us is just, is, it's overwhelming to us. And again, we thank you, Dennis, for, for jumping in and championing the deal, shall we say, you know?
Well, I, I, I appreciate the sentiment, but I think a lot of the accolades should go to the Copeland Foundation, in particular, Joyce and John Tobin, Richard Wells, Mary Gormly, and the president is Martha Verdon. They absolutely embraced it. There was, I don't think there was any question they were going to put the money up for this, when they saw the return.
Well, hopefully, it'll be money well spent. We, we certainly need it.
Sure will be. Okay, so we do have a motion in front of us, it's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you.
Bob? Okay, item nine on the agenda is discussion of a housing production plan. And Bill Clark is coming up for our town planning to join us. And we, we are talking about a housing production plan. I've set the stage a little bit for this, because, and then we can actually discuss the, the plan itself, and, and kind of where we stand on it. But first of all, I'm a huge supporter of affordable housing in Milton, in general, because it's, it's a means of attracting young professionals and working families into the town. It's a means of providing housing for many of our municipal employees, you know, that otherwise wouldn't be able to afford housing in the town. You know, a lot of people say, well, we have affordable housing in the town, but, you know, we, we don't have deed-restricted affordable housing, and when you get spikes in the real estate market, you get spikes in that housing. I can give you a perfect example, my parents' house, a 900-square-foot house in East Milton, that, you know, probably now, it's been sold for a while, but in 2005, it sold for $370,000. That's, for a 900-square-foot house that hadn't been modernized since the 40s, that's not affordable. And, and those are the kinds of things you get in, in tight real estate markets. So, you know, this kind of guards against that. And, and again, for people that think affordable housing is low-income housing, it's not low-income housing. It's, it's meant for people at 80% of median income.
I think that's a very good point, Tom.
And, and median income right now is, you know, it ranges from, from a one-person household of about $46,000, up to, you know, very large households of $86,000.
A, a family of four is 66.5.
Yep.
So if you make less than 66.5, you'd be eligible for affordable housing. It's, it is not low-income housing. It is housing for people who make just under 80% of the median income for the greater Boston area.
And in a lot of cases, that is the young people that just graduated from college, or, or the, the working-class families in the town.
It's, it's, it's the beginning and the end.
Yes.
It's, it's our students after they get out of college, so it's our beginning nurse, it's our beginning teacher, it's our beginning fireman. It's our retired person who lives on Social Security. It's, it's either end of the spectrum. It is not meant for somebody who's. It is not meant for somebody who's in the, in the job market now. It's for blue collar workers. It, it's somebody who makes, doesn't make that high-end pay, higher-end pay.
So, so the goal in Massachusetts, as for a long time, been that they want all Massachusetts communities to have 10% of their housing stock as affordable. Milton has approximately 9,600 housing units, residential housing units. 10% would mean, actually, 964 of those units would have to be affordable. Right now, we've been given credit for about 426 units, so we're about 538 units short of our affordable goal. And basically, an affordable housing unit is, is any, it could be a single-family house, it could be a multi-family, you know, two-family or multiple-family, it could be ownership, it could be rental. But it has to be restricted in some way, either by deed or otherwise, for a minimum of 15 years. So in other words, it's got to be restricted to only occupancy by an affordable family for at least a minimum period of 15 years. It could be, it could be for life, but, you know.
When, when the town permitted 36 Central, there are 18 residential units in the building. Two of them are affordable. Those two affordables go by any one of the doors and they all look the same.
Right.
Go inside the units, for all intents and purposes, they look the same.
And that's also required.
The difference in those two, two units, they have a den, not a second bedroom. It's the only difference in there. It's the same kitchen, same bathroom, it's the same square footage. It's just, the affordables don't have a second bedroom, they have a den, which means it doesn't have a window to the outside. It is a room, it's sizable, and it goes on the market for, I believe it's 156,000, whereas the unit that's right next door is 399,000.
So who set the price of 156?
The state.
The state. And 18, 36 Central, I'm sorry, 18 units was built a couple of years ago, they got their certificate of occupancy last year, was it?
Yeah, I believe.
They started.
Have these, are these two units actually?
Not yet.
In our numbers?
No. State is reviewing their affirmative marketing plan now and they will be marketed probably first of the year, they'll be gone three, three months later.
But they have to go into a lottery system to, but, but you, yeah, to get them counted, you do have to have an affirmative or a, a marketing plan.
The paperwork to it is a little bit of a bear.
Well, that's the only detrimental thing about affordable housing, I will say.
A lot of regulation, a lot of rules.
Is, you build a product.
Yep.
You know, for example, the 18 units down there, 16 are occupied and you get two that you could probably have 200 people be applying for right now.
Right.
Yet, somebody is holding it up. I don't think it's the town, or was it the town held it up?
It's not the town. It's, it's, it's that paperwork that has to be produced for it. It, it's not a plan that I write for the developer. It's a plan that actually our housing authority is in contract with the developer to write because they haven't written one before. They are contracting with Hingham's Housing Authority, who has, and Hingham will help them run the lottery. From that point on, once the units are sold, there is oversight yearly to those units. That yearly oversight is me checking, sending a letter asking if the unit, making sure that the unit is still in the ownership of the person that we think it's in. There is a deed rider built into it. It's a deed rider that's built into the master condo documents, so it cannot get sold on the open market without first notifying us, us being the town.
And if it does, if it does get sold to a non-affordable, it's a substantial penalty to the unit owner selling.
Right.
So, basically what happens is, the way multi-family units are counted, if you're condominium complex, you've got to be generally 25% affordable units.
This is under either 40B, there's two ways to go. You could go under 40B.
Or a lip.
Which would give you 25% affordable. The town could be proactive and define a smart growth area and attempt to, or smart growth district and go under 40R, at which point 20% would be affordable.
I think it would be good at this particular juncture to explain what 40B is and what 40R is.
Okay, yeah.
Because most people don't know.
Right.
I, I, I can explain a little bit of that. Basically, under 40B, a developer can acquire land and bypass most of the, of the zoning requirements if the building is set aside as affordable, which again means that either 20 or 25% of the units in the development have to be maintained as affordable for at least a minimum of 15 years. Then, the, the process, the developer first applies for site eligibility review with the state. They, they look at the, at the development, they look at where it is, they look at the design of it, and they decide if it's appropriate at the state level. Once they get that, then the developer comes back to the town, goes to the Zoning Board of Appeals, and the Zoning Board of Appeals reviews the plan. And it, it can't outright deny the permit. There are certain things that it can, it, it could deny based upon unmitigated traffic or public safety issues or unmitigated conservation issues. And those are basically, credit me if I'm wrong, Bill, but those are basically the only two.
Those are the two that would hold it up, design guidelines, if you don't think that it meets those. It, it all goes back to the state and the state gets a second crack at the application itself.
Yeah, so it's, it's always appealable to the state.
Right. What's, your, your 40B is one that, it goes around your local zoning. Your local zoning doesn't, doesn't, is nonexistent. The 40R is, it's something that town meeting would have to approve. You set the guidelines, you set the standards, and yes, they do meet the town zoning. The benefits to it are 20% is affordable. There is not the built-in 20% that the developer must maintain. I mean, it can only make 20%. 20% is all the 40B developer can have as profit, which is why a lot of them are nonprofits. So, the, the 40R also comes with a payment from the state for every permit that's issued, and I don't remember the amounts for those, but every building permit comes with X amount of money and it's thousands, not hundreds.
Right. It's meant to mitigate the.
It's, it's not many.
The children in the school system.
It might be two, it's two and a half.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I forget the number.
Yeah, so, and the only other thing, the, the ZBA can place some restrictions, like there's, you can require that 70% of the affordable units be for local.
Local preference.
Preference. And, and the town probably would ask for that, makes sense. And they can place other restrictions as long as they don't unduly burden the developer. But, but if it's going to cause the developer to lose money, then they, they can't force them to.
If the mitigation package gets too large, the developer can balk.
And just appeal.
And go back to the state. And friendliness of the so-called friendly 40B gets taken away, the mitigation pool dries up. We actually have seen one of those in Quincy, up on Quarry Street. If you remember how the permitting of it was, there were new, new water lines, new sewer lines, new street lights, new streets. If they could have built what they wanted, when the city came back and said, no, too big, we want more and more, and the developer balked and said, nope, it's 40B. They went in and now it's up to the city to put in those water, the sewer, the new street lights. There is no road pavement and you have more buildings than you had in the original application. So.
So, so, so let me explain how this has come about and, you know, or why this has, has come to, to a head now, because it's, it's not a secret for a lot of people, but there's still a lot of people that may not know about it, but we are currently faced with a, a potential 40B development on 20 acres of land at Rushell Road across from Fuller Village. And that proposal is for 300 units, 25% of them affordable, townhouse style at the street level, and then three to four-story buildings in the rear of the property. There would be high-end rentals, you know, similar to an Avalon Woods or a Archstone or, or those, $1,700 a month to $2,500 a month for the market units. And they're estimating $1,100 to $1,300 a month for the affordable units. And, you know, should say that generally the, the neighborhood is opposed to it at this point. And, and the neighborhood has, or, there are many people in the neighborhood that have asked us to look at a housing production plan. So that's kind of how we've gotten to, to this point. And Bill, if you want to take it from there and explain what a housing production plan is?
If you have a housing production plan that is approved by the state, you have the ability to hold back a 40B, as long as you're meeting the goals that you set forth in your housing production plan. The community sets a numerical goal for housing production and it's pursuant to the community's number on the subsidized housing inventory list. We know that half a percent of our goal is 48 units and that's what we would have to put down as what we want to achieve.
48 units per year.
48 units per year.
And that's the only?
And this is something, this, this plan needs to be approved by the planning board and by the Board of Selectmen. The chairman of the Board of Selectmen writes a letter saying that they promise that they will, you know, do everything in their power to attain 48 units per year. Now, what's in a plan?
Can I just, this is for 10 years or?
Till you reach 10%.
If, if you want a one-year, if you want a one-year exemption from 40B, then in that year, you have to produce 48 new, Milton would have to produce 48 new units of affordable housing. I don't think Milton's ever done that.
I was just calculating, we need probably five or 600 to make up our quota.
Yeah, five, five.
We're 4.4%.
4.4, so we need 48 units a year for 10 or 11 years.
Yeah, about that, yeah.
And yes.
And that'd basically get you there.
If, if you take the, the note that I gave you, this, and turn it over on the backside, will tell you how many units we need per year. The, the cover sheet inside the folder there.
Right.
Okay, and that mine.
Just so that my.
Hey.
My thought process, I want to ask you a question. I keep hearing 10%.
Yep.
Is there another method such as percentage of land that's used for affordable or is it strictly mathematical, 10%?
If you could take all of the buildable land in town and prove that you have 1 and a half percent affordable for that land.
By area.
By area. You could, instead of reaching 10%, that is another way of saying you've reached your 10%.
But how come people never talk about that? Is that because 10% is a better way to approach the issue?
There is, I only know of one community that has attained that and that was Waymouth.
Because it's not, it's not just building lots, it's roads, it's, it's.
Right.
All municipal buildings.
Anton, Waltham, and there's another community out there that, that tried this and it was denied. It's, it's not an easy deal. It's something that, you could potentially take a week to take and put all that together and it, it's a solid week and it may not work.
If I may ask you another question?
Yep.
96, I heard the number, 9,600 housing units?
That's what we currently.
And do you know how that's broken down? If Milton has 96 housing units, how many are single-family homes, two-family homes or condos or? Does, is Fuller Village all its units, are they housing units?
They're all counted at 9,600.
And is, does each unit count as a one at Fuller?
One, yep.
So at Fuller, then there'd be a high number?
It's 316 units there. Every one of those units is in that 9,641.
Okay, do we have the breakdown? In other words, for me, I'd like to mathematically get to the 9,600 at, at least at some point in time. How many single-family houses, twos, how many condos, how many units, Fuller Village?
I can give it to you because it comes from the U.S. Census.
Okay.
It's just, it's data mining.
And then I think it's important too, and I know on the Governor Stoughton Land Trust Committee that, and you participated in it, we talked considerably about affordable housing.
Yep.
And we compiled data on affordable housing and I think we should, like, as selectmen, revisit that data so that we have a handle on our numbers. And, and in terms of like, let's say the, the, is it 36 Central Ave that has?
Yep.
Two condos?
Yep.
If they're not counted yet, we probably ought to have a separate place that there's two coming, so that we know.
We actually have a list that would, that, that breaks down where those, where those, what are they, 400 and?
I guess.
I think it's 426 units that are on the SHI number.
I guess what.
I know that we have 500 and, there's 500 and something that could be affordable, but of those affordable, only 426 count towards the subsidized housing inventory list. And that's, those have to be approved by DHCD.
I mean, at least where I am individually right now, in my thought process, is the fact that I'd like to get a handle on all the numbers.
Yep.
A breakdown of the 9,600, a breakdown of what, how many affordable units there are currently in Milton, how many affordable units in Milton are there, but they're not counted yet, what can we do to get them counted? And then adding to my thought process, when I left and all of us were there at the Fuller Village meeting, which, you know, I was very, I figured it would have a, a good number of residents there, but I was overwhelmed by the number that, I know they originally set up for 100 chairs and they had well over that numbers and, you know, I share the opinions of the Fuller Village residents and, and their board of directors and, you know, to me, the proposal that's across the street from them, Mill Creek, with its 300 units is too dense. And when I walked away from that meeting, what struck me was, we need to really take seriously Senator Joyce's recommendation that Milton needs a housing production plan in order to deal with proposals such as Mill, Mill Creek. So where I'm coming from is, I'd like to get the numbers, I'd like to see if, sort of follow the Senator's suggestion and then, you know, move ahead on this because.
Okay, well, you know, let's, let's kind of finish.
Can I?
The discussion, but, go ahead.
Take those on? In 2004, the town went through what was called Executive Order 418. It was the state's, it's the state's way of helping each community that wanted help to create a, for lack of a better term, a mini-master plan. It was four components of a master plan. In the town of Milton, it was open space, open space housing, transportation and commercial, community development, economic development, sorry. That plan was given to the selectmen in 2004. And in follow-up to that, the town took on, under the Fair Housing Committee, they took on an affordable housing plan, which the Board of Selectmen approved in 2007. The plan was dated February 2006 and somewhere in 2007, the board accepted that plan. If you were to go through that plan, it takes and identifies a lot of the same issues that a housing production plan would, needs. Well, if you go back to what the minimum of a housing production includes, you're looking at the most recent demographics for housing stock, which is everything that you just asked for. It's the projected growth and determine the need of what you have. Those are the same items that we have in the affordable housing plan that we put together in 2000. in 2006, only they probably need to be updated because the 2010 census changes those numbers. You're going to identify the development constraints, the limitations that the municipality may want to put on things. Where does the community want to put these type of units? You're going to have to identify the capacity of infrastructure that can meet these needs. Do we have roads in the area of where these developments might take place? Do we have the water, the sewer, the electricity in these areas to address these?
And you have to specifically identify the areas. You are building a roadmap for any developer.
That comes, by the time I get to number three, we'll hit that. Under the affordable housing goals, you need a mix of housing that consistent with state needs and town needs. They're not going to take all one-bedroom units and say, we're going to accept every one-bedroom unit if, if a development goes up and there's two and three-bedroom units. They want a mix of what's in that development. They don't want just the smallest, cheapest units you have and call those affordable. They have to be the same as everybody else, there has to be a mix. The numerical goal, well, we know what the numerical goal is because we know that we have, per the census, we need 10% of 9,641. So to implement all of these, you need to identify the different zones that you want to put these into. You're going to then start modifying your areas or the zones to accept these kind of units. And you have to write the regulations to encourage housing. Now, to the town's credit, that's what they did down in the Central Ave Business District when they put in Section 3J of the Milton zoning, where is the Central Ave Milton Village PUD. And we said 10%. That's what 36 Central was built under, that's what the Henry's Building filed their original application under. And it's a requirement of that special permit for that district for 10% affordable. Two, identify the specific sites, private or town, for encouraging 40B applications. You put together a housing production plan, you have to start identifying where those potential sites are. I gave you three communities' housing production plans. And in each one of those, you'll see, they have identified the areas where they would like to see this development go. That's a requirement of this. You're telling the developers where the development can go, where you would like to see it go, not that it has to go there. You're going, preferred development characteristics, what do you want the community, what does the community want the development to look like? We know that the development down on Randolph Ave was, came in as two rectangular masonry buildings. It does not match up with anything in that area. You've got extremely large houses on one side, you've got ranches on the other side, you've got the DPW on this side with single-family homes all around it, and you've got new single-family homes on the other side. You cannot take and put something that doesn't meet the typology of housing or the typology of buildings in that particular area. So the state kicked it out before it ever got here.
And that's what the site review is all about.
And this was on Randolph Ave?
Yes.
That is on Randolph Ave. It's still there, they're still working on it. Right now, it's under appeal to DEP because of the wetland line. If the, because the wetland line is too large, it gets kicked over to DEP and DEP is filed for an adjudicatory hearing on the resource area line.
So they kicked out the design, is that what you're saying?
The state kicked out the design, they came back. They came back to get a modification to their wetland line. As Concom looked at it, there are three different wetland people out there and there were two different, two people had one opinion, the other had the other. And the difference is, I think it's like 4,000 square feet. If I move the line to here, I have to put all those back in. And if those are in, it trips the threshold number, so it has to go back to DEP. DEP is looking at it, DEP hasn't made a decision, but that's where it is, it's under appeal to DEP. Another, you know, to go back to the plan, the town has to identify all of the town-owned sites, which the town would then commit to putting affordable housing on or working to develop these with companies to put buildings on these particular sites. And participation in a regional collaborative to address the housing development or affordable housing development. We've done that. We belong to the South Shore Home Consortium. Through it, we have taken and produced five in a group home up on Walcott Road. But that's five in, five years that we've been in the program. We have a little bit more money. I am working with the developers for the Milton Hill House to try to get more of their units in the old building. It is not a requirement of their variances or their special permit to have affordable put in.
Why not?
It's not a requirement of our zoning.
We don't have inclusion in rezoning.
It's not a requirement. So it's, you cannot be the zoning board of appeals and say, nice project, but you will give us this. You cannot do that. There's nothing in our zoning that says they can make that. There's nothing in state zoning that says that they have to do that.
They did ask for it and they have given it to us.
If we ask and they give us, that's something else.
And we did.
We asked and they said, we understand, we live here too, we will work with you. We would prefer not to put it into the new building, but we will commit to putting it into the old, the first building. Their comment was, those units, the tenancy in those units, the average tenancy in those units is nine years. So people are staying there, the rents aren't going through the roof, and they're willing to take a certain number of those units, turn them into affordable for whatever time we haven't determined what that time limit is going to be. Their whole thing is premised on, can they get 36/50 Elliott Street permitted? We do believe they can. So we're looking at having units of, for affordability in the original Milton Hill House, in the Henry House, and we're still talking.
Now, basically, Bob, the reason for a housing production plan and the reason the state came up with that idea is not to stop affordable housing, it's to promote affordable housing. If the only reason that we're doing an affordable housing plan is to stop affordable housing in the town, that is the wrong reason. Plain and simple, it's the wrong reason. Should we have an affordable housing plan? Yes. Should we have one that we can live by? Should it be a living document?
You've got two separate documents.
I mean, I'm sorry, a housing production plan.
We have the affordable housing plan.
We do have an affordable housing plan.
We're chasing the housing production plan. It makes sense to have one. I included in your packet, the town of Bridgewater, Duxbury, and Situate. If you go through those, you'll see that Bridgewater should be producing 42 a year. Duxbury should be producing 44. Walpole should be producing 62. I actually highlighted each page and tagged them so that you can go and find and see where that number's coming from.
But it's also not something we can roll out tomorrow. We can't do it. Even if we wanted to, we couldn't roll one out tomorrow.
We're looking at it probably.
Six months.
But it sounds from your comments, you know, you mentioned like 2004, you mentioned 2007 affordable housing plan.
Yep.
It sounds like a lot of the work is there and that it just needs to be updated.
It needs to be updated, yes. And that's why, for as much as, we went out for a, you know, we asked a couple of consultants for a number. They came back and said, you know, yeah, we could do it. You know, three to six months, it's, you know, maybe a little quicker, but the issue is, how many public meetings do we have to have? Those drive your costs crazy. We're looking at about a $20,000 document in three to four months. And does it make sense to have one? Yes. Is it going to be the end-all, be-all? No. Because again, you may be, you may be just identifying spots that you don't really want to have developed. You're doing a lot of developers' work for them.
And identifying those lots. You have to have public hearings because you're basically going to be going in that document and telling people where the affordable housing is going to be.
We're asking people, where are those sites? I mean, I can use my computer and I can find where these sites are, but it's, some of it has to do with size and you would never put a development in some of these places. It's where would you like to see the development? I mean, the difference in smart growth, dumb growth. Smart growth is the new building at 36 Elliott, 36 Central. They're both smart growth. You have restaurants diagonally across the street. You've got a train station.
Right.
Diagonally across the street. You have parking that is shared that you may not move your car for a week. You, when you go back and look at other communities and look at the parking requirements, you'll see that in a successful transit-oriented development site, the requirement for cars is three-quarters of a car per unit. Which means that somebody in the building doesn't have a car because they don't need it. They may get rid of the car and they may use Zipcar because, again, they don't need that payment of insurance. It also helps the developer because less parking, parking costs money because parking is, is space that can be used for something else.
So what about dumb growth?
Somewhere, somewhere where I cannot pass the five-minute ice cream test. I want to get an ice cream, I want to be able to go there, and I need to do it in less than five minutes.
But you take the 40B proposal up on Brushhill Road, you've got to have a car.
Unless.
Yeah, well, let's talk about that though for a second.
Unless one of the requirements that you build into that permit is that they provide transportation such as a van that could, they could do in concert with a regional transit authority, which in this case could be the people that serve Royal Street, they're coming from the, they're coming from the train over on 128, they're coming from Reedville, they're coming from Clary Square. It could be something that is set up that's just local, it's something that could be a van that in the morning it takes commuters, in the afternoon it takes, you know, people from the development plus across the street to Fuller. Who needs to go to the store? Are they, are they good questions? Your questions, I'm wondering if the questions coming in are.
No.
Okay.
Well, let's, you know, talking about that particular development, okay, let's forget a minute because the developer's primary purpose for that development isn't really affordable housing, that's a way of getting it in.
That's how it gets in.
His proposal is luxury rental housing. That's what he's doing. Would it, and let's, let's assume for a minute that there were no traffic issues, there were no wetlands issues. Would it be desirable for this town to have high-end, I mean, high, high-end rental housing that is going to attract the 25 to 35-year-old professional person that probably doesn't have any or many kids, that probably, that, once they do have children, they probably will relocate into housing that's in the town and those units become repopulated with 25 to 35-year-old young professional couples. I mean, is, and you're putting something out that's going to generate almost a million dollars per year in tax revenue. Is that a bad thing? And again, we're assuming that there's no traffic issues, there's no wetlands issues, and we've got an area-appropriate.
For as much as everything we've heard about that development up there, their initial foray was, we have 22 acres, we want 300 units. Well, when we look at the three lots and we add them up, they're just a tad over 19 acres in Milton. Where are the other three acres? I'm not sure, but I think they're in Canton. If I look at what one of those people owns, it's in Canton. 300 units, well, 300 is the maximum allowed by the state for a 40B. And Concord you look and they say, well, there's 350. Well, that's because Concord asked for 350. They went in and said, look, we've got 30 acres, we want 300 units. The town looked at it and said, you know, we're this close to 10%. You will give us 350 units, you'll put us over the 10% and you will give us.
That's a friendly 40B.
That's a friendly 40B. They took their mitigation, the town next door got X amount of money for mitigation and they like it. Presently, it's 85% built, 75% filled. They're looking at a value completed, what do they have to, they're 57 million worth right now, or their value is 57 million? Their value isn't supposed to be 80?
Yeah, something like that, yeah.
I did this with Jeff the other day, Jeff was running it, we started talking about it, and we came up in our numbers where we'd be looking at about 700,000 if they could get 300 units. Having seen this, I'm sorry.
In taxes?
In taxes, new taxes. When we look at it and we look at the site, there's an awful lot of water up there. How they think they're going to get 300 units with that much water? We have not had heavy rains, but you look at that ground and there's water all over the place. You look at Fallow Meadow and you look at the aerial photos of the area, you see how Fallow Meadow holds the water before it gets to the Nippon City River. It comes off the hills and it comes down there. You heard Mark Smith make a comment about Pauli Wakefield the other day. Pauli Wakefield worked with Mass Highway to put in that structure that's right beside Thatcher Montessori. Look at that structure two or three days after it has rained, it's still taking water, but it's taking water because it's coming off of the Blue Hills and it comes into that area. That structure's supposed to take and settle out the solids before they go down and flood out her pond, which her pond empties and goes across this property. So there's all kinds of water out there. We haven't seen any papers on the, on the site, so we don't know where the wetland flags are. Because of the type of project it is, they will not be adhering to our 25-foot setback, although if they come in as a friendly 40B, it would behoove them to attempt to do that. I'm sure there's going to be a lot of wetland reconstruction on the site, wetland enhancement in other areas. Some of it is drainage that the different estates over time have just taken and put, they just laid pipes and put it under the road. And as time has gone on, the pipes have heaved. When the pipes have heaved, it brings the lip of it up too high and now the water's settling down underneath waiting for more water before it can get pushed into the pipe. You're create, they're creating their own mini-wetlands up there. So they have a whole lot of these issues that, we need to see it on a plan.
Right.
So you're saying there may, may not be 300 units coming up there?
Exactly.
Quite possibly.
I'm saying that I don't see 300 units on that site because of the amount of wetland flags up there.
If Bill's right, if three of the acres are in Canton, Canton's already at its 10%, so Canton can just say no.
Right.
To the development of those three acres. So now you are dealing with just 19 acres. We don't exactly know where to get the 22 acres from.
Bill, do you know what Randolph and Stoughton, what percentage they're at?
Stoughton is just over 10%. I've seen Randolph, Randolph is low. It's fairly low. They're down around four where we are.
See, I want, I want people to know that, yes, I'm in favor of affordable housing, I really am. I'm just not in favor of 300 units in a multimillion-dollar neighborhood where there's no transportation, where traffic is just horrendous coming up Brushhill Road onto 138.
And I think we're all in agreement with that.
Yeah. Where, where if... Yeah, where, where if, if there is three hundred units and you've got one kid per unit, that's a new Tucker school. The, the population of Tucker is three hundred. You know, we can't handle this kind of thing.
You just touched on a, a point that I made when I met.
So if, if I may finish Bob, while I, while I have my train of thought. So my question is, why did it have to take a three hundred proposal, unit proposal for us to start talking about a housing produc- production plan?
The reason is, the, the real, the real reason is, we've got an affordable housing plan that has forty pages, fifty pages of suggestions in it. We've done about two of them because there is no appetite to do the rest of them, quite frankly, to create affordable housing. And that's what it's meant to do, is create affordable housing, not stop it.
I, I know that one of the selectmen a few years ago put together a, a community meeting when the initial foray of the forty B on Randolph Ave came about. Um, I know that John Shields contacted the neighbors. We had the, the downstairs room here was packed. And we went through what a forty B was, how the whole thing would be working, what kind of notification. Um, a, a forty B comes to the town and it's an application that the developer gives it to the state. Once they get the approval, they give it to the ZBA, the zoning board of appeals chair. The zoning board's chair acts like the quarterback and he passes to all the chairman of all the committees in town. And that, that's going to go from conservation to historic to planning board, uh, selectmen, uh, DPW, it'll go to the police, it'll go to the fire. It'll go, every board gets thirty days to make comments. Right now, we have nothing from this group. Except we're doing our due diligence. We're looking at this site. We've been forewarned that this thing is coming. We're doing what we should do and that's having a discussion. Do we want it? Do we not want it? If, if there's no way to fight it, what are we asking for for mitigation? These, although we're not saying that, these same points are making their weight. You know, they're being sifted out as questions that we need to take and look at. Can we say, we don't want that development because it's bringing in too many school-aged children? No. Can we go back after that issue and say, you know, that particular development is bringing in too many kids. What do we have to do to lessen that impact? So that's the question we should be attempting to answer here.
And discussion is good, Bill. I, I one hundred percent agree with you. So I would encourage whoever is going to put this housing production plan together to start immediately. Assuming that the town is going to get three hundred new units in the next couple of years. We still have another two or three hundred units to go.
Okay, keep, keep in mind though, and, and, and I am all for a housing production plan. But keep in mind that if we can't produce, if we file it and get the exemption and this developer has the wherewithal, if they want to, to wait the year, we're not going to meet it. We don't have the exemption the year after. And they come through and they get their permit. So what, what have we done? We've maybe stalled it off for a year. And for the sake of perhaps writing a housing production plan that could hurt the town as opposed to help the town, I don't think we rush into it, that's all.
There may be, there may be a hybrid that we could come up with that is going back after the affordable housing plan and implementing more of those units, uh, more of those recommendations to gain more units. Um, and we may just attain what we should have. And we may be able to hold it off. If we're producing it anyways, we don't need the plan to be able to go back and say, that's what we have. Well, we've already produced and we show that we've produced this amount. And, and that's what we're attempting to do.
Do you think we can produce forty hu- affordable housing a year?
No, which is why you don't have a plan now. There was not the stomach in, in the past select boards since I've been here to be able to go and write a plan like this and say, we're gonna give, we're gonna build forty-eight units. It, it just wasn't there.
And, and we have to be careful how we do that because it, it, it has impact on the entire community.
We, we don't build that, you, you, you just had Joe here looking at the numbers for the permits. And you saw some of the new permit numbers that were there. We don't produce that many new houses. We have, you know, for all intents and purposes, we may be at the point that we're built out. We have a lot of infill into larger lots. But even on those, we don't have the numbers that other communities have. We still have fairly large lots with a single house. We don't have, uh, our, our resident C isn't growing. We don't have all that many houses growing in resident C. Resident B, you've got a couple. Most of our new growth comes in A or double A. It doesn't come in the C where you're going to get many new houses.
I just want to comment. You mentioned education, you mentioned schools. Uh, when I met as an individual selectman with Mr. Hewitt and Mrs. Horowitz, who was the New York attorney, I brought up the issue of schools with them. I know that, you know, when you're talking forty B, in terms of your gut concerns, you talk high water tables or environment and that kind of stuff. But on a separate issue, I wanted to let them know that they were talking to somebody that was very protective of the school system.
Absolutely.
And I'm gonna remain very protective of the school system. I feel that your schools are the cornerstone of your community. And I have a, I have, you know, a personal interest now. I've got a, a second grader and she's, class size is around twenty-five. I'm concerned about class size, particularly in the French programs uh, in, in the schools. And I mentioned to Mr. Hewitt that bordering his proposal is the city of Boston, the Reedville section. And if they've got three hundred rental units, a lot of the people over in Reedville who have total system, and I don't blame them because if I lived there, I'd do the same thing. I'd jump over to the, the New Mill Creek. And so my, so that my kids could go to the New Mill and public schools. But, you know, we have, we, our first obligation is to protect our own kids.
Would you pay twenty, and if you lived in Reedville, would you pay twenty-five hundred dollars a month?
If I was in Reedville, I'd try to get, get the low end affordable over there, which would be according to Mr. Hewitt, twelve hundred.
But they, but you gotta be income eligible. And maybe you are, but, but you'd have to be income eligible.
I, I just think that Mill Creek would, would attack, attract.
And, and secondly, seventy percent of those can be local preference. So you'd, you'd only be talking, you'd only be talking some twenty units that would be eligible for a person from Reedville to come in if you did that.
The school system is, is tight right now.
I understand.
As soon as you get a, a new project, you would be talking about total town redistricting. And if there's an issue that gets parents concerned, it's redistricting.
I understand. So I am going out tomorrow to take a look at the Concord site. We're gonna sit down with the Concord planner. We're gonna have better idea of what the demographics are of that Concord three hundred and fifty units. Because what they are proposing here is identical to there except it's three hundred instead of three fifty. Um, in all likelihood, it's the same kind of town. The demographics are gonna be similar, I believe. Um, so we'll have a better idea of, you know, just who the people are that are living in there and how many children there are in there, how many children there are of school age and, um, you know, right now, we don't know. We just don't know, obviously. But, you know, again, that aside, um, you know, is this a good idea in that area? No, I have huge concerns. The, the traffic's horrendous. I don't know how you mitigate traffic yet. I don't know, they, you know, there's wetlands, you're, you're right on the corner, you know, right on the edge of Fallow Meadow. You know, I, there should be huge concerns about conservation land, you know, and, and water runoff and everything else. So, yeah, there's, there's plenty of reason to be concerned.
They're, they're, um, they're probably about eight thousand people short of where we are. They're like eighteen, we're twenty-six.
Who's they?
Concord. Where, where Concord Muse is the other proposal that, um, it's the other development that Mill Creek has in Massachusetts. Um, on, on those numbers, when, when you said twelve hundred, twelve hundred is their uh, one-bedroom unit?
Low end.
That's one bedroom. And the, the state doesn't allow, um, parents and the kids in one bedrooms. So they need to get to the second, which is thirteen to fifteen hundred. Um, and a three-bedroom would be fourteen seventy-one. Now, if you used the numbers that the state usually approves, uh, there would be out of three hundred, sixty affordables. That would be six three-bedrooms because it's ten percent. And then they break the rest between the one and two bedrooms. Um, the, the other way to work on, on the school issues is approve a forty R district. Approve a forty R district, now you're eligible for forty S funding. Forty S funding is by putting that development in on that site, they're not going to pay for your kids to go to school. But if there are extraordinary circumstances that drive the cost of those kids in that particular development up, the state picks up that cost. Now, that could be, I just have too many kids out there and they need another bus. It would pick up the cost of that particular, whatever that part of the education is. You just have to itemize what those extra costs are. By putting those units in there, uh, out of those sixty units, you get, um, sixty kids. That would be extraordinary. That's two classrooms. That's, that's a bus and a half.
This, this would not qualify though for forty R, correct?
This is not. Well, unless we were proactive and we made it a forty R site. But I don't see town meeting, having the stomach to go and say, that site forty R. Going and looking at other sites around town, um, and saying that they will, that site should have, you know, extreme density that, or increased density. That is what, that, that's part of the public process for the housing production plan. How do we bring that up? Where do we find those sites? Who's going to, you know, who's gonna say no to a certain area and?
And we can write a housing production plan that, that would identify, you know, sites that are in areas of critical environmental as, as not appropriate for, um.
The, the ACEC or the Area of Critical Environmental Concern, the designation that has been given by the Executive Office of Environmental Affairs to the Fallow Meadow area. And the Fallow Meadow area, I know that Tom tried to, Tom Palmer tried to make that comment the other night, how broad is it? Uh, it's, it is Boston Reedville Dedham. It's uh, Westwood, Norwood, it goes back to Walpole. Um, it, it comes down Canton and it, because of Ponkapog, it goes back to Randolph. Um, it, it's, it's fairly inclusive. It's very big. It's over eighty-eight hundred acres. Um, the designation goes all the way out to Blue Hill Ave. It goes up to Nippon City Valley Parkway and then comes back down. So all of Fuller is in the ACEC. All of this site is in the ACEC.
Right, right.
You've got some work ahead of you, Bill.
Yeah, it, 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 well, we all know that they're tough to fight. They're very tough to fight.
Yeah.
And, you know, and just want to reiterate that, that I firmly believe we should have a housing production plan. I think we should, we have to make sure that it's compatible and, and we incorporate uh, our affordable housing plan into it because we have adopted that plan and, and start there. But we're twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars and, you know, three to four months away from having one that makes any sense, I think. Um, I, you know, my, my sense is, you know, and, and we do need the planning board to, to buy in also. But, um, you know, maybe it would make sense for, um, for a member of the board of selectmen to work with, um, you know, the planning board to be a liaison, um, just to have a meeting of the minds and.
Planning board has this item on their agenda for next Thursday, the thirteenth. Again, in order to create the plan, it needs to be approved by both the selectmen and by the planning board. Um, and then a letter would have to be written. Um, so it's not a, this is absolutely not a slam dunk that it can happen. It's not something that it won't happen. When you start talking about the, uh, the intricacies of forty B, having Mr. Whiteside working on those issues for you is a huge help. Um, having been chief counsel to DHCD, Department of Housing and Community Development, um, he, he knows the forty B stuff inside and out. And it's, we created the affordable housing plan with some of his tutelage. Um, does he like it? No. Would he make changes? Absolutely. But he, he's good at that. He, he will make a change the day after he finished it.
Right.
He's, no, he's already committed to working on something, whether it's a hybrid, whether it's a, whether it's a plan itself. He, he is already committed to bringing it forward and starting some type of plan.
You know, that, that being said too, we don't necessarily have to commit with a housing production plan that's forty-eight units a year. We just won't get the one-year exemption if we don't. But if we realistically don't think we can meet that standard, then does it make more sense to have a housing production plan that is attainable and, you know, and otherwise, the only reason we're filing it is to stave off a forty B development for one year and then it's gonna go on the shelf and it's gonna gather dust. And that's all it's gonna do. And that's not the idea.
And we've just identified all of the parcels that we think these type of developments should pursue or could pursue.
You have identified them?
Well, you will in the plan.
Producing that plan, you will identify specific areas.
I know you have to.
You're required to.
I thought you said you did.
No, I said if you create the housing production plan, you will identify where you want to put this stuff. And you'll put it in writing and send it to the state.
Let's get it done. Um, there, there are other things we, we have to consider too, inclusionary zoning or, or some in the, in some, basically what inclusionary zoning is saying is, is anytime a developer's gonna commit and build something, that they either have to pay into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund or, or they have to create affordable units. Right now, we don't have that. So a developer can come in and, and not create affordable units. Um, I know that, uh, the chair of the planning board is not a fan of inclusionary zoning. Might be a fan of other things to, to entice people to perhaps produce affordable units. Like you may, uh, say if you want to come in to the community and build something, if you want more density, then they're gonna be affordable, you know, things like that. But there's a lot of thought process that has to go into that whole thing. That it's not just, you know, it, I mean, Senator Joyce the other night made it sound like, you know, it, this is a thirty-second process and we file it and it's done. And that's just not the case. It clearly is not the case.
I've given you three different communities' approved plans. Um, I have several others sitting on my desk, so if you want more, I'll give them to you, but.
And we necessarily have to have public meet, public hearings.
Right, these are big, so.
And, and they're not gonna be pleasant public hearings. Because you're telling a community, I mean, I give you, not that I'm, not that I'm, you know, saying it should happen or, or it isn't even appropriate, but what, what do you think the Indian Cliff people would say if we identified the other four acres of the town farm as, as a place for affordable housing? I mean, you know, can you imagine that public hearing?
I would imagine that the residents of this hundred and sixty-eight homes up there would not be in favor.
They may not be, yeah, exactly. Um, you know, and, and you're gonna get similar feedback from a lot of communities, you know. So it's, it's not an easy slam dunk thing to do.
I, I, I agree with you. It's not a slam dunk. It's not that easy. You know, you just mentioned Indian Cliffs. Those are single-family homes.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Zone day, they're all acres, so...
Yep.
They wouldn't like something that was different than their...
I absolutely agree with that.
And I would imagine, you know, I...
But that's what this plan is. You will identify areas that you will tweak the zoning to allow something out of the ordinary. Something that will allow greater density than you presently allow. You have to identify those districts and come up with something that, where they could happen.
And then I also think, you know, like earlier, we talked about the Milton Hill House and the proposed new one. Now, those owners, the Sullivan families, James Sullivan and his wife Diane grew up and raised Nancy Sullivan, who was up before us. And I feel that they've got a love and an understanding of Milton. And yes, I understand that they're in business up there on the hill to make money, but I also think that they'd understand where we're coming from in terms of...
Which is why they said yes when we asked them for affordable units.
Yeah.
But the other point to that one is, when the father sold his house on Parkwood Drive, where did he go? He moved into that building. So he definitely is putting, you know...
In Florida now.
Well, but that's great to be able to do half the time.
Okay. I mean, so I guess I did indicate, does anybody have any interest in, if the planning board has interest in kind of setting up a little subcommittee for the selectmen and the planning board to kind of, you know, occasionally meet on this issue to...
Who wants to be the liaison?
You'd be the right guy.
He's on a motion.
All right. I was going to say, I'm way too busy, but go ahead.
I see that coming.
Yeah, I know, I did too. All right, I'll do it. If the planning board's interested, I'm interested. Okay. Thanks, Bill.
Okay, I have one thing that is not on your agenda.
Okay.
At Channel Four aired that piece that you and I did.
Oh, gosh.
I don't know what time they started it. As I walked in, I got a call, my mother said, "Oh, yeah, by the way, you were on Channel Four and you're coming back on again at eleven." So I don't know what it's...
What was it about?
East Milton.
Oh.
The East Milton...
About losing the million dollars.
It was...
Oh.
Eight-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand. It's the use it or lose it.
Okay.
The Chairman and I were on there, Pomodori from Fitness Unlimited, and Representative Capellano. So we had good company. But eleven o'clock.
Thanks, Bill.
Thanks.
Okay. Let's see, next on the agenda is approval of the Avon Walk for Breast Cancer.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to allow the two thousand and thirteen Avon Walk for Breast Cancer to use the town's streets and ways for its annual walk fundraiser that will take place on Saturday, May eighteenth, and Sunday, May nineteenth, two thousand and thirteen, and to mark the route on Friday, May seventeenth, using temporary plastic signs on trees and permanent signposts, which will be removed by ten a.m. on Sunday, May nineteenth, contingent upon approval by the police chief.
Second the motion.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Item eleven is the liquor license fee policy. And I guess, basically, the genesis of this was, we do have a new restaurant in town, and they're doing very, very well. This is the holiday season, but they didn't open their doors until, what, November, mid-November of this year. We don't currently have a mechanism of prorating the liquor license fee. The liquor license runs calendar year, and it's a twenty-five-hundred-dollar fee. It didn't seem quite appropriate to have to burden them with, you know, a new establishment with a twenty-five-hundred-dollar fee for a month and a half license, when they're going to get hit with another twenty-five-hundred-dollar fee.
Next month.
Yeah, exactly. So this is a motion to prorate that fee if the license is issued in the last quarter of the year, and to make it a, if it's issued in the last quarter, make it a quarterly fee as opposed to an annual fee, which would make the fee six hundred and twenty-five dollars instead of twenty-five-hundred.
I'll make a motion to amend the selectmen's fee policy to include language whereby those applicants who are issued a liquor license during the last three months of the calendar year, October through December, would have their fee of twenty-five-hundred dollars prorated to a fee of six hundred and twenty-five dollars for the last quarter.
Second. Motion made in second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay, now, we have one budget to approve, that's the general insurance budget. Yeah, just the one budget. And this amazingly is a zero-increase budget. I've been, I was on the warrant committee for, what, seven years, something like that, plus a year on this committee. I've never seen, in all those years, the insurance budget be anything less than like an eight percent increase year after year after year.
What's the reasoning?
Basically, well, a lot of what drives the increase in the insurance is workers' comp. I mean, you know, the liability policy, the fire insurance policy goes up, as they all do, because values go up and everything else. But not by tremendous amount. But if you have what's called an experience modification in your workers' comp insurance, in other words, somebody files claims, insurance companies never lose money. So if somebody files a claim, you get hit with what's called an experience modification. Your workers' comp is based upon a percentage of your payroll. And so it's that, you know, it could be, you know, a dollar and a half per hundred dollars of payroll, or some such number like that. But then if somebody puts a claim in, then they tack on this experience modification. So the more injuries you have, the more claims you have, the more expensive your workers' comp gets, and it gets very pricey with the experience modification. We've had a good program in place for a number of years to try and make people work smarter so that they get less injuries in the workplace, and we think that's some of the dividends that are paying off currently.
Absolutely. In this year, we received for fiscal year twelve sixty-seven thousand dollars in Meyer Loss Control Credit Program. And that's because we are educating our workforce. Our department heads are attending seminars, and the crews are attending trench safety seminars and workshops. And it is, we have really seen a significant drop in workers' comp claims and general liability claims.
So this would be a nine-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-six-hundred-and-forty-seven-dollar budget. And the breakdown of the bigger ones are our fire multi-peril insurance is three-hundred-and-fifty-five-thousand dollars. Our workers' comp is three-hundred-and-sixty-seven-thousand. And then we have that fifty-two-thousand dollars being that extra workers' comp for the police.
The police and fire injured on duty.
Yeah.
Yes.
And that covers us, what's there, a hundred-thousand-dollar...
Forty-five-thousand-dollar...
Deductible?
Deductible.
And that covers up to a million?
Million dollars, yes.
Fifty-two-thousand dollars a year for that.
And I can remember, I don't know, maybe it was a month or two ago, Mr. Neely was here and he commented something about firefighter Pickens who had gotten severely injured while on duty.
Hmm.
He mentioned something about insurance, and I forget what it was, but in the case of that particular injured firefighter, did we not have high enough coverage for him?
We didn't have any coverage.
Okay, why didn't we have coverage for him?
It generally wasn't available, so it's a relatively new...
Do we have coverage now for...
Yeah, but no...
Situation?
Yes.
It's quote-unquote disaster insurance, but it doesn't cover against that huge disaster because it's a forty-five-thousand-dollar deductible. So the first forty-five-thousand dollars of claim or injury is on your dime, and then it covers you from there up to a million dollars. Well, we've already spent over a million dollars on firefighter Pickens.
Firefighter Pickens.
Yeah, I mean, just because of the severity of his injuries. But it does give you some degree of protection. But it is fifty-two-thousand dollars a year for that. That's about it. So we do have a motion in front of us.
I'll make a motion to approve, signing forward to the warrant committee, the fiscal year fourteen general insurance budget in the amount of nine-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-six-hundred-and-forty-seven dollars.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion?
Just one comment. I would, what you said, Anne Marie, about some department heads taking courses, that's something I would strongly urge you to continue...
Absolutely.
...having them do. I know in my business, you know, for twenty years, we never saw OSHA, Occupational Safety Hazard, coming onto our jobs, but they come on quite frequently now. And we have to take all these courses as well. And as a result, we've had no claims in the last number of years. So that's something I would strongly urge Town Hall to push all department heads, and as many workers as you can under department heads to take similar courses.
Absolutely. And it is because of the department heads that we did receive such a large check for last fiscal year, because they do really buy into the program.
And I should say, Anne Marie has been spearheading that program for these five or six years.
That's great.
So Anne Marie's pretty much the catalyst that has made this thing happen, in Milton at least.
Good. Glad to hear it.
Okay, item thirteen on the agenda is Town Hall operations. As you know...
I think we have to, you got to finish that motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Motion made in second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Item thirteen is Town Hall hours of operation. And as we all know, we've been, we've extended what we were previously calling summer hours, which is to work Monday through Thursday from eight o'clock in the morning till five o'clock at night, and to work Fridays from eight a.m. to one-thirty p.m. And that has been fairly successful, and we want to have a discussion about either extending that or making that permanent. And...
Again, I have, I'm in favor of extending it. I asked Anne Marie today, was it today or yesterday?
It was today.
My only concern was, have you had many complaints about it? And I guess you haven't, one or two.
That's right. We did have one woman come to the counter, and then we had, I believe it's Citizen Speaker last meeting...
About extending hours into the evening.
About changing the hours into the evening.
Which may have some merit, but as Anne Marie informed me, and I should have known, it would have to be impact bargained...
Right.
...to extend the hours into the evening. And you'd still want to keep a forty-hour week, so you'd have to figure out, you'd have to cut more hours out of the daytime someplace...
Yes.
...to, you know, open it up for a couple of hours in the evening on a particular day. I mean, it's something maybe we could think about at some point in time, but it's, you know, and again, as more and more transactions are, can happen online, and that is kind of our goal, and as more people get used to doing that, there's less need to...
Traffic.
And most of the traffic we get at Town Hall is in the morning, because it's contractors coming in for permits and pulling plans.
And that's a good point. And since that's a big revenue generator, like we talked tonight, we should, you know, we should cater to wherever we can get that extra dollar.
Right. So actually, the early hours of operation because of the, because we are a half hour early in the morning now?
Yes, we're a half hour, eight a.m. as opposed to eight-thirty.
Has really helped the contractors in that sense, so they can get up to the job quicker.
And people in the town clerk's office stopping in to pick up a birth certificate or a death certificate on the way to work.
Trash sticker or something?
Trash stickers. We have seen a lot of foot traffic in the mornings.
Right.
So there's really no change to the general public?
There is no change. And there are no change to our hours. We do work thirty-seven-point-five hours.
It's important to know.
We have not reduced the Town Hall workers' hours.
Mm-hmm.
Still working that. Same number.
Right.
So what we're saying now, then, is for the residents, that basically we're establishing hours of operation that'll be yearly hours...
Correct.
...as opposed to, we've had...
Trial period.
Winter hours, summertime hours, we're now saying that...
Those are Town Hall, those would be Town Hall hours, yeah.
So Town Hall is open, going to be open year-round, eight to five, Monday through Thursday, eight to one-thirty on Fridays.
Correct. The other benefit we do get is a slight utility savings, because we can shut the, or turn the heat down in the winter, you know, to a fairly low, I mean, cold enough to freeze the pipes, but to a, you know, and the same thing in the summer, we can shut the air conditioning off. So there's a utility savings. You really wouldn't want to do that overnight on the, when you've got to come back in the next morning and try and work when, you know, there's icicles hanging from everybody's computers.
And there were, just in addition to this, it would be a change to the senior center as well, Monday through Thursday, eight to five, and then Friday, eight to four. They stay open a little later on Friday.
Say those times again, I'm sorry.
Monday through Thursday, eight to five, and Friday, eight to four.
At the senior center.
At the senior center.
What is the senior center right now?
These hours.
So it would just continue?
Monday through, it would just continue.
It would continue their hours as well.
Or no change at the senior?
No change, no. But the vote is, in addition to Town Hall, it's also the senior center, to continue their hours of operation.
Got it. Is there a motion, or is it...
Do we need a motion, or just...
Yeah, I mean, the motion would be to make permanent the hours of operation for the Town Office Building, Monday through Thursday, from eight a.m. to five p.m., and Friday, eight a.m. to one-thirty p.m. And the senior center, Monday through Thursday, from eight a.m. to five p.m., and Fridays from eight to four p.m.
Second that motion.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay, now, time again to propose a motion to enter into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to threatened litigation, Kevin Murn versus the Town of Milton, and to discuss non-union collective bargaining, police chief contract, believing that having that discussion in open session would have a detrimental effect on the bargaining positions of the body, and return to open session to adjourn and convene a meeting of the trustees of the Governor Stotan Fund.
Second.
Motion made in second. Mr. Sweeney?
Yes.
Mr. Cohane?
Yes.
Mr. Hurley? Yes.